Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
On the Saturday Select Board meeting on Monday, March 7th, 2022 to order. And the first quarter of business would be nomination of Select Board officers. You have a nomination for Chair.
Okay, I'd like to nominate Art Whitman as Chair.
Is Art Whitman nominated?
Second.
Second by Mike. Any other nominations? Call for a vote for nomination for Chair.
Okay, aye.
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 Three, zero.
Aye abstain.
One. And Art, you're Chairman, and they'll turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you. Nominations are in order for Vice Chair. Do I have here a nomination for Vice Chair?
I'll nominate Tony Kralkowski for Vice Chair.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second out.
Martha seconds. Any other nominations? All those in favor of Tony as Vice Chair say aye.
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 Abstain.
Three, zero, one.
I will ask one thing as we start the meeting. Please remember, because of the masks, keep your voice up so it's recorded properly. Thank you.
Conflict of interest statement. Does anybody have a conflict of interest with anything shown on the agenda?
No.
Rules, organizational meeting, rules of procedure, and liaison appointments. That's all pretty much one big thing. We will be... The rules of procedure are...
You've sent that, right?
Yeah, they were distributed.
I have to go to all of us.
Yep, here we go. Rules of procedure. Basically, you'll be operating under Robert's rules. Do I... Do I have a motion to accept the rules of procedures as they were sent to you?
So moved.
Moved by Tony?
Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, four, zero, zero. And we all have to sign this.
Yes, you all have to sign that one.
Is there a list of liaisons?
They should be doing a list of...
This is Art's. I want to share with mine. I printed them all. Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think the way to handle this, rather than get into this tonight, is I think, Martha, why don't you go through and decide which ones you would like, and then the rest of us disturb up the rest. I think...
Okay.
I mean, I've always done the road crew or the Department of Public Works and that sort of stuff, but...
Okay. So to just take a look, and it looks like about seven to eight are about what we all say.
Yes.
And so, as far as the duties of being a liaison, what does that entail? Are we going to a one meeting every quarter and reporting back? Or what's the...
To tell you the truth, I think it's only when it's necessary to communicate with them.
Okay. So there isn't a regular communication?
There is not.
So we don't know necessarily what any of these boards necessarily are doing?
Not unless you want to.
Unless they come to us saying we have a problem.
If there's a problem, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And has that always been the way it's been? That we don't have... Even though we appoint some of these people as Select Board members?
As often as you want to.
You're certainly welcome to.
Okay. It seems like it would be helpful. I mean, I know that some of these boards are fairly active and others are not as active. But to make sure that we're kind of cohesively communicating all of the things that are happening in our town, it seems like being a liaison.
My term at the Rescue Squad is up this month. So if anybody else wants to take that, let me know or let the Chair of the Rescue Squad Board know.
Okay. And is there a list, Dave, of who is actually the Chair of each of these committees or boards?
I can make it from some of those. Some of those are in the counties, so I don't have that.
Okay.
But I can get who's the Chair of the committees. I'll email you with...
Okay, because that would be helpful to just to note, because I didn't even think that some of these were still in existence and working committees.
Well, that's why I think some of them are kind of not functioning committees, but we continue the appointment because theoretically they could reactivate.
For things. Okay. Perfect. I will do that. And then who should I communicate with with my choices or ideas?
Have you just send them to me, and then I'll compile the list?
Okay.
And I'll get it arranged for the next meeting so we have it formatted and we can vote on it.
Perfect, okay. And are there any other things that any of you gentlemen do that you particularly feel very strongly about being liaisoned with?
No. Excuse me, Mike does the website.
And is that all? I didn't see that as a thing. I saw media.
Yeah, the website isn't really a liaison thing.
Oh, okay.
Now that we've hired a webmaster, we're going to demote Mike.
Lucky you. You don't have to do...
I don't think he's disappointed.
Zoom magic anymore. And you said, Art, that you typically do the...
Department of Public Works.
Okay.
I don't know which room.
Which I didn't even think was on here, actually.
Is there road crew?
No. There is not.
It's probably Highway Department, I think.
Highway Department.
Okay. It says Mike is Highways at the moment.
He's the road foreman, but there's a liaison to him.
Oh, Mike Chianowski, it looks like, has got Highways. It doesn't look like there's any other...
This probably isn't as formal as it looks really, I think, right there. It's more if there were to be an issue with one of those situations, you would liaise with them at that point.
And do the committees themselves know who their liaison is? Because as a Planning Commission member, I don't even think I knew, Tony, that you were our liaison.
Probably not. This is on the website.
It's on the website somewhere?
I believe so.
Okay.
I believe it is.
I'd have to check.
Yeah.
Okay, because I think that would be very helpful for the committees that are on here to know.
Yeah.
Who and how to get a contact to us to communicate. Okay, perfect. Well, I will work on that, Dave, and then I will send it back to you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Next is the Appointment Policy Adoption. We have to adopt the policy, and then we can go into the Department of Town Officers.
Okay. You've received the Appointment Policy that was sent to you. Entertain a motion that we adopt this as our Appointment Policy.
So moved.
Moved by Tony?
Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion?
Martha, just so you know, this is an annual, exact wording thing. It's just a procedure we have to go through.
For, yep, the appointments. Sure.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? So carried, four, zero, zero.
And this evening, I left for each of you on the desk the list of people who are appointed annually. So you have that list, and then you'll see that we do need to represent the BCRC. But we can look at these. I figured we would make it... We make these in March, so we can make the final appointments at the next meeting. And I need to check in with some of these people to make sure that they are still interested in staying. But I don't really see, other than appointing someone to replace Ken on the BCRC.
And Tracy Mulligan.
Yeah, Tracy's already replaced, so I'll just have to change the name there.
We'll take that up next meeting.
Can someone think of... We are going to need the Board to nominate someone to be on the BCRC committee.
Is that traditionally a person from the Select Board, or is it...
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we have two from town. Cindy Morris is the other one.
Yep, I know Cindy.
And the other one has traditionally been a Select Board member.
In this case, it was Ken.
And it was Ken. And do we know the timeframe or abounds of what typically is required of someone who's on that this year?
Well, you know, and they have monthly meetings, as I'm sure you're probably aware. I would think it'd be prudent to attend their monthly meeting to find out what is going on on a county-wide basis. So that is, has the potential to be a time-consuming position. There would be meetings involved with that to make it work efficiently. Cindy, I know, is involved with all kinds of things, even in the Glass and Berry zoning and things like that, so I don't know if a selectman here could be that involved with something like that for a number of topics that you would hear at the county meetings.
Okay, so Dave will check on peoples to make sure that they still want to continue, and we'll talk about it next meeting, okay? Probably the first thing I should have done is welcome Martha.
Thank you. We're jumping right in.
Well, we got tied up in the procedures that we have to do everything right here to make sure that we're following the right procedures, so welcome, Martha.
Thank you.
Yep. So the next thing, getting back into the regular routine, is approval of the minutes of the informational meeting. This technically is not a full-blown Select Board meeting, but we did take minutes, and we're asking for your approval of it.
Yeah, we should just really have them in our records, and that's the only way to do it.
Yeah, we had it, okay? So you've seen the minutes sent to you. Is there a motion to accept them as printed?
So moved.
A move by Mike.
Second.
Second by Tony. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm not sure if I can... I was definitely at the meeting, but I was not a Select Board member at that moment, so I believe I need to abstain because it's not in his body.
So we have three, zero, one.
Yep.
You have some warrants? First one is a payroll warrant. No, I'm sorry. Here's the payroll warrant. Payroll warrant for $30,878.07.
So moved.
Moved by Tony?
Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? So carried, four, zero, zero. Next is check warrant number 27. For $90,308.46.
So moved.
Moved by Tony? Second by Mike. I'll just read off some of the ones that are $1,000 or more. Morris Repair for $1,200. RCS for $1,009. Sycamore Landscaping Cemetery Mowing, we pay him throughout the year, $2,600. I guess it's for Mount City to the Leagun Towns. This is our unemployment resource.
Yeah, the smaller one, 654, is our unemployment payment for a quarter.
And then the other one is scheduled.
The larger one is our liability, well, all of our insurances in a quarterly payment.
PRS Sales, $1,000.
That's the Fire Department.
Yep. Wallingford Crush Stone, $1,300, $1,394 for gravel. William E. Daley, $13,028. I assume that's for road sand?
Yeah, that's sand and gravel.
Salt, $5,428. Another one for salt, $27,035. Bennington County Sheriff, $1,800. Business Services, $3,429.
It's mostly postage for the annual report, the dog licenses, and water bills.
Is that mailing out the ballots to people?
Yeah. Ballots were very expensive this year.
Because there were so many.
There were so many.
I mean, it was so thick. It was a lot of money per ballot.
Both, GA Bow Fuel for $1,555. Another one for $1,094 to Bow Fuel. $1,620 to Bow Fuel. Used a lot of fuel, didn't we? Co-Field Technologies, 4208. What would that be?
Co-File is the restoration of the old records, and that's coming out of the Restoration Fund.
So there's a fund for that?
Yeah.
4245, or 4246 is another one for them. And that does it. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? So carried, four, zero, zero. I'm just going to send a cover sheet. The poor folder may not make it around.
Yeah. It is. You could at least put some tape here. I know. I know.
And the last thing, Shire's Housing, out on the end of Perrin Road. We... The town was a pass-through for a lot of the funds that were used there, and so this is the last, we hope, the last one. So check for $340,040, but this, again, this is just a pass-through.
So moved.
Moved by Tony? Second by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried, four, zero, zero.
We'll have to get a signing pen for this.
Does anybody have any announcements? I have one. About 20 days ago, we passed the ordinance that allowed us to require a mask inside the building, which will be running out sometime in the next few days. And we have the option of extending it, but I think we all kind of indicated that this last one would be the last one, so the next meeting will be without masks if you're comfortable with that.
Okay.
They're always optional for whoever.
Yes.
And we'll always have them at the door if someone wants to pick one up.
We are still in a red zone for Bennington County, and the CDC guidelines does suggest that even if you're fully vaccinated, that masks should be worn inside. Just that is medical advice from the medical thing. I can take it as you will, but that is the guidelines and what the hospital is promoting as well as at this moment in time.
Does anybody else have any announcements? Okay. Public comments? Anybody from the public?
No. Well, there's one person with no comments.
No comment yet. Church Report, Melanie? You'll have to bring your own chair this time.
Bring your chair over.
You can actually speak from there, probably, Melanie. Can you just...
Can we take a look at the cash flow first, please? Oops.
Well...
Well, you can do this instead. That's fine.
Why don't we do this one instead?
No, that's fine. Um...
Yeah, sorry. There's a multi-step thing, so at least I can only do it in multi-step.
Okay, very little going on. As you can see, the only activity this month was a little bit of water payments coming in and that equipment grant that came. That was a state grant, right, for the Fire Department?
That was FEMA grant to buy the Cascade system, the air tanks.
Right. So that was all that happened in the reserve accounts. And if you want to see down at number 350 there, that's the Restoration Fund we were talking about just now, that the Co-File is coming out, so the payment you just approved is going to come out of there. You can see that we've got plenty of money in there, and that's what that's for. Okay, want to talk about the cash flow? The main thing I wanted to talk about with the cash flow, you can see I put boxes around them, that Shire's Housing flow-through grant, you just signed the other side of that. So that's money that came in and just went straight out again. The reason I'm making an issue out of it will become apparent when we get to the bottom of this report. But there was also another one for almost $20,000 that was a BCRC. It's the same thing. It was just we're sort of a conduit. The money comes in, and then we immediately write a check, and it goes out again. So it makes our receipts for the month look crazy high. If don't fall in love with that number, it's going to go away again immediately. So if we want to just scroll down a little bit, actually, all the way down to the bottom. Okay, so this is what's... I was talking about this with Art and Dave the other day. We're not going to be able to use the Budget Status Report from NEMRIC anymore for the rest of this fiscal year because of those crazy flow-through grants. They're making our revenues look crazy high. You can see right now, it's saying that our revenues are 115% of budget. That's because those unbudgeted revenues are throwing that off. Once you... Once we write the checks that you just approved on the warrant, the expenditures are likewise going to be much higher than they actually are. So what I'm going to do is, for the rest of the fiscal year, I will correct the balance net of those flow-through grants. So the actual number you should be looking at is the 677 versus 794 for the same time last year. If you recall, last year, we were extremely conservative about spending money, so that's not... That's not a normal number. Actually, this year is much closer to normal. Is all of that clear? Am I explaining it in a way that makes sense?
Yeah.
So I will continue to show this budget status this way for the rest of the fiscal year.
Yep.
Okay. Any questions about any of that or anything else?
So the BCRC grant, was that also for the Shire's project? Or was that...
No, that's a separate grant.
We are hosting a grant for BCRC that's going to work on zoning bylaws for nine towns in the county.
Right.
And they need one of us to be a flow-through.
Yeah.
Because it's federal money, they have to have a local town posted.
And we're going to talk to our auditors about the best way to handle this, if we have any more of these in the future. I don't... We don't like them.
No.
Because we don't have any more.
I don't see them coming up again anytime soon.
Yeah, they're weird, and they're strange for the county because they are budgeted for them. I mean, it's not really... It doesn't have anything to do with us.
Well, you could catch a charge 10%.
Well, actually, the number...
Well, there is an administrative fee that used to be attached to it.
Well, no, I was just going to point out, the number on for the revenue there and the check, there's a difference of like $3,800. That is the administrative fee that I charge to the fans for my time.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's a percent, yeah.
Yeah, you submit the bills. I mean, they've been budgeted for $9,000. I couldn't find $9,000 for the work that they save $6,000.
Darn. I mean, so it's not budgeted.
I'm not very good at that. I'm sorry.
That's a little margin of error there, too, but it's not budgeted. But we will talk about it with our auditors just to see if we're handling the accounting properly. I don't see any other way to do it. Any questions about that or anything else, money-related?
Not about this, but you did mention water bills coming in, and I think, I don't know if this is the time, but there is funds available from the state if somebody is having trouble paying their water bill. Is that not right, Dave?
And also property tax bills.
Okay.
We have it on our website.
Yes.
Okay, so we just want to get that out to everybody.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up, yes.
It's also on Front Porch Forum. I know they've been putting out ads for both of those with clickable links.
It's utilities, it's Green Mountain Power Utilities, property taxes. It's much broader than the first one, and you link directly into the state, and they'll guide you through it.
Okay.
And I believe that Josh is directly contacting some water customers who could benefit from it specifically. And so unfortunately, a lot of the time, the people who need it the most are not... They're not checking Front Porch Forum.
Right.
So we are having outreach for that.
Good, good.
Melanie, so do you email those documents every month, the reports that you just shared with us?
Yeah.
Okay. Can I send you my email so that then I can be on?
Sure.
Well, yeah, actually, you know, these, I got today, so I didn't forward them before the meeting, but when I get them, normally, I do send them to the Board before the meeting.
You send them? Okay, bye. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that my email got to whoever it needs to.
As long as Dave's got them.
Perfect. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. Have the DPW report?
Yeah, we support. Doing with a lot of rain. They had a number of washouts, they're working on some problems. We had a problem up on Holy Smoke Road today. That's kind of a long story, as the residents there know. We're going to have to take down some trees in the spring and reestablish some ditches. There's no other way of doing it. And I think that goes back years of the trees that were in where the ditches are supposed to be, and they really need to go. People want the trees, but you can't have a road without ditches, and that road, as anybody's been on it knows, it gets really narrow. There's nowhere for water to go right now, so it causes problems. And there's been a few around town, and other than that, the crew is just keeping the equipment up, stoppiling some things. They'll be doing more tree work on Buck Hill and a few other locations, doing some brushing and things for the next week or so. And then we'll see where the weather's going, and we can move on to bigger and better things.
Buck Hill because of anticipated repaving. Buck Hill because of anticipated repaving, right?
Yep, we intend to pave Buck Hill this year. It'll be a shim code from end to end. And what they're doing in some trouble spots, like they did a couple of years ago, you cut it out and you build up that one area instead of milling the entire road, which gets very, very expensive. And of course, we're going to have to be cognizant of what the actual cost of paving is this year. This isn't a grant that has to be spent this year, so if the price gets up too high, we're going to have to start shrinking footage, so we might just wait till next year and see what next year brings. I mean, anyways, been to the pump and paid 414 today. I mean, it's a petroleum-based product, so it'll be an interesting spring to see what the market rate is.
I've noticed, I think it's maybe a federal mandate, but all of the interstates, all the way up through from Florida, all the way up through, I noticed there is a heavy emphasis on cutting back the trees along the interstates.
Yeah.
It's sunlight warming up the roads and all that sort of stuff is extremely important for us up here, so.
Yeah.
I know people... And the ash trees have got to come down, otherwise they're going to be...
Yes. We did increase the funding for tree removal this year, and we are stimming trees on... Bayhand Road, yeah. We're going to take down a bunch of trees on Bayhand Road that are... This is like a swamp there, it is. They're just getting really dangerous. And as we all know, there's lots of trees that can come down with 70 miles of road, 140 miles of roadside. You have a lot of trees to worry about. The other things we're doing this year, I'll just go over them for a minute, is on White Creek Road, the depression we've been looking at, then filled in. Mike and I were talking, and we're going to hire a boring company. We're looking at the state again to discuss it, but they're kind of backed up, and what we really need is what we did by ground elves, and we just have to do some boring samples and find out what's under there, then we can get a hydrologist to design a fix for it.
That wasn't bored before when they did brown elves?
No, we only bored ground elves. We did one bore, it was about $2,500.
Yep, okay.
And so we have to move down and see what's wrong with that then. It's the same material, it's going to be kind of the same thing, but to design any kind of meaningful fix, you have to have the data to do it correctly.
Yep.
So we'll probably get to that in the spring, and we have that culvert way up with the grant way up in the end of Shaftesbury Hollow.
At one time, we talked about sending out an RFP for an engineer to tell us what could be done for that whole road because we were hoping some...
Yeah.
Federal money or something might be available, but...
Yeah, you know, and we tried to talk to the state to get us some help with designs, and we're still working on that, but like so many things, things got so backed up over the last two years. So we're relaunching this project, but we know we need the samples, so I think we're just going to go for the bore samples and then shop it around to the state. That's probably the only place with... If we get any of the infrastructure money, we'll get a minimal amount, and that might help.
Because it connects to communities, right?
Well, yeah, depending on how they use that money to fund us.
Okay.
And if it's a big enough fix, it could be a structure grant and not just like a paving grant, because we might have to build some retaining walls.
Yes.
You know, so it's very much enough in the air project. It's holding, but anyone who's driven it, you know, you can tell it's kind of sinking again.
Yep, it is.
Yeah. There's only so many times you can pave over the...
In fact, paving over it makes it worse because it's...
Makes it heavier.
Yeah, makes it heavier and sinks more.
Yeah, and pushes out more.
That it for...
Yeah, that's a... Because basically, you know, it's waiting for more snow, keeping the equipment up and doing... They get out and they do as much rush work as they can.
How do we do on our budget as far as salt and...
We're fine on all of it. I don't have the exact figures in front of me, but we watch it pretty closely. We're good going with gravel until the rest of the year. The winter sand is getting close to the top. This... The weather we've had this winter has eaten more salt and sand than...
I thought so.
It's all small storms, but they all need to be treated, which is unfortunate, but we're well within the parameters of what we budgeted.
Okay.
Shouldn't be a problem at all. Same with the overtime, it's well within what we're projecting. What I projected is the reduction in next year, because it is coming in about the average I thought would start coming in.
Okay.
I think it's all in good shape with that.
Okay. Every year, we have to certify or swear... Swear on our mother's graves that...
The Certificate of Highway Mileage, which the board needs to adopt and sign. There's been, as it is nearly every single year, there's been no change in mileage for the town. So this is... What they... This is for the state takes these... We don't... If we didn't file this, they would give us the same amount we had in last year, but I like to do them anyway. And this is what they base the town funding for, for highway, state highway funding, is your mileage and types of roads you have, so.
Okay. We swear that there's a total of 86.279 miles, I guess...
Yes.
Between all the different classes, class one, class two. We don't have any class one, class two. It is... What's class two?
Class two is connected roads. I'd be like White Creek, it's like Airport running up to Maple Hill, Buck Hill, East Road. Any town, anywhere that connects two towns is class two. Most of our roads are class three.
Yep. Over 50 miles of class three, and there's 15 miles of state highway within our...
Yeah.
Within our borders, okay? So I asked for a motion that we submit this to the state.
So moved.
Moved by Tony.
Definitely.
Seconded by Martha. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? So carried, 400. I don't... It only asked for one signature?
Uh, yes, I believe so.
Do you want... Or do you want everybody to sign it?
Uh, you can all sign it. I can sign it, you can sign it. There may be a move there for everyone to sign.
I think there is if we... And next, we have liquor licenses that have to be approved every year.
Yes, we had all the licenses come in the last couple of days, so we wanted to put them on tonight and add them to the agenda. The first one is for Pauline Incorporated. It's the annual liquor license application for a second pass license to sell malt and Venice beverages. This lines on the second page for the board to sign when they vote to approve it.
Entertain a motion to accept this?
So moved.
Moved by Tony. Seconded by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Carried, 400.
Okay, the next two were both from timetables. One is the first-class restaurant bar license to sell malt and Venice beverages. The second one is a third-class restaurant bar license to sell spiritous liquors, and that's at all their catering events. So we need the two licenses, so there's two places to sign here for that.
Entertain a motion to accept both of these applications for timetables.
So moved.
Moved by Tony. Seconded by Mike. All those... Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? So carried, 400.
They're sitting down at the end, they're so empty.
Yeah.
It's a good thing about our function.
They're all running into the middle.
Do you have any other business, Dave?
There's just one other thing regarding the sidewalk scoping study for Grandview and Hawks Avenue. We already started the process, and the advertising went out, we're accepting bids to March 31st, that's through BCRC. They're doing... They're basically our form for this project. There's just a question on what we want to do, and we can finish this discussion at the next meeting, but something to think about. There's a selection committee when they get the bids in from the planners. There's a selection committee. Normally, I would be part of that. There's a question of whether or not Select Board wants to have someone appointed to that, and we would meet with Mark Andrews and go over the people who put in bids. And then the second question would be, will we have a special committee for the scoping study? I don't... I don't know. We'll have to think about that. The scoping study will be done by whoever the contractor is. There'll be public hearings and public meetings for that. So the public meetings, the public, you know, comments, and there'll be part of the process the whole way. I'm not sure how in-depth this special committee would be. Because part of the whole process is you have to have public meetings. For those who remember the Sidewalk Project out here, you have to advertise for a special meeting, you come in, and Mark would be here, or whoever engineering firm gets the grant, and the town, and we would talk to everybody. So if... I'm not so sure we need a committee for that, because we'll be having public hearings.
To be clear, this is only for the design of it? This is not...
This is not the design either. This is the feasibility of it.
The feasibility of it?
Yeah. It'll give the roughest idea of what it will need, because it's going to need storm drains, it's going to need kind of taking of lands to give the width we'll need, and it'll give a general idea, because you can figure out how much the sidewalk's going to cost, how many feet when you put in storm drains, so it'll give a rough idea of what's going to be quite an expensive project. And that's what you're looking for, because then you go for... If the town wants to bond it up, then you go for the money.
For design or for...
Well, the... This probably will provide the non-construction design, but then when you have to get construction design documents, which are very expensive.
Yeah.
But then, of course, the building and concrete right now is very expensive per yard. We'll give an idea, and then when... That's the whole point of scope, it's set. You find out what it's going to cost, and you figure out if we can really afford to do that. And the voters, because the voters would have to approve this, the voters would have to know what we're looking at.
And lighting was... Would be part of the scoping study.
Everything's open. And that's part of having the public hearing, and I have the mailing list from everyone who was at the original meetings, and they would all be invited to make sure they all know that this hearing's taking place. We've had suggestions for lighting, we've had opposition to lighting, we've had suggestions for speed bumps, the full variety of things. So everything will be looked at. And, you know, the main fix, the ideal, is to have sidewalks, and that will even come down to, okay, who's getting the sidewalk in front of their house, because who's losing half their front yard? There's a lot of issues on this one, so it'll be interesting to see what they come up with. And there'll be interim meetings too, where we can have the public in and say, well, this is what he's looking at. What do you think?
Okay.
It'll be an interesting process for this one. This is pretty simple over here, you're putting the sidewalk around State Highway. That's pretty straightforward. This one is someone's losing part of their front yard. It's the only way to do it. It's the only way to do it on all these streets we're talking about, so.
And the other thing is they aren't... They've got to look at a connection to something else, so they're going to be going down Hawks Avenue on the Bank Street.
Well, that's one reason why we got the funding, because the way I scoped it out was it'll connect with... If North Bank and Sidewalk ends like 40 yards short of our intersection, so it would start from where theirs ends, go all the way up Grandview, then go down Hawks, and then connect on Bank Street, and we'd have to do something on Bank to catch up with where they leave off, I think by the railroad track is where North Bank and leaves off there. Because the idea is to make a walkable neighborhood, you know, which is, you know, a good idea.
So it would be on the west side of Grandview.
Well, that's a point of contention, I think.
Well, I mean, if it's going to hook up with the north Bennington...
Yeah, it'll have to... A part of it will be on the west side.
On the west side.
I think people want it on both sides. It'll be interesting.
But there's nothing to hook on at the bottom of Grandview on the east side.
Yeah, because it should be on the south side of Hawks, so that runs down, connects with the east side of Banks.
Right.
And then it'll come up. So, yeah, logically, it should be on the west side of Grandview, if everyone on the west side of Grandview...
And there's not much room there.
No.
Oh, no, we'd have to go somewhere.
We'd have to take their land.
Yeah.
Well, it's our land.
It's our land, but, you know, like most people, they...
Yeah, they've owned it for so long.
And, you know, because it needs...
The drains.
The drains.
The drains, yeah.
And it's going to need storm drains from top to bottom, and that's also a big factor.
Yeah.
And you're going to have to change the slope of the road, because you have the water coming down the other side.
Is there anywhere for that water to go into?
Issue number four.
There's nothing... There's no underground anything.
Yeah. See, you need... Yeah, because you need a cistern and something at the end that's going to have to...
Yeah.
Filter it out, because the way it is now, because the design now is the water comes down...
Yeah.
Through a grass ditch.
Yeah.
That slows it and that absorbs it. Now, if you threw a storm drain, you get a flat run all the way down, which is part of the problem up on Twitchell Hill when they paved that, because you just have a sluice coming down.
Yeah.
And it has to go somewhere. So it was a lot of interesting...
Yeah.
Aspects.
My God.
Which is why we're paying a professional engineer to come in and give us...
It's a major project.
And there's always the possibility that there's something that we're just not thinking of.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, things change a lot and come up with things, maybe we're not thinking of one of them. I don't know what, but you never know.
Stay tuned.
Okay. Any other business with you, Dave?
Nope. That's it for me.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Marlene and Gina for the smooth election.
Yes, that was beautiful.
They did a good job. And the poll workers, and I was one of them, but... But no, thank you. Thank you, Marlene and Gina.
Well, they've cut it down to...
Yeah.
They've got it down bad now, so.
It's a good job.
I would like to ask the board members to come back next meeting with just a couple things that they'd like to accomplish this year. Nothing... Nothing big is futuristic or anything, but just things... For instance, I think there's some ordinances that we should get back into looking at that are outdated and all that sort of stuff. So just...
The one thing we should...
I think if we don't set up goals, then we're just kind of...
Yeah. Yeah, the ordinance is an ongoing one that's... I hope to get some time on. And we need to get ARPA going.
Yes. Yes.
And I have some things that I'd like to discuss about call hall and funding, the things that need to be done here.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, we should definitely have, have those on, because call hall should be one of the goals for this year, is to finalize, I think people are beginning to get back a little bit to the normal, so maybe I can get these groups together and get this, get this launched.
Okay. Any other, anybody else have anything? Uh, review of action items? Is there anything that we decided had to be done? Anybody take on any responsibilities or anything this meeting?
No.
I don't, I don't remember any, this is just more of an organizational meeting. No other business and that sort of stuff? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Tony.
Martha, can I get a second in there?
Sure, I'm so quick, like, I'll have to pick her on the drawers.
Second by Martha. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So, opposed? So carried, 400. Thank you.
Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.